I will ask for any items to be added to the agenda. Does anybody have anything to add? Councilor Brent Sampson.
I'd just like to make a quick statement recognizing International Women's Day.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Brent Sampson. Do we have consensus on adding that to the agenda? Yeah, okay. So that'll be added by consens... Pardon me? Yes, oh yeah, yeah. That'll be added by consensus. I'd just like to give everyone else a chance to go first, that's all. Anybody else have anything to add? Okay, I'd like to add the receiving of the plaque from the Lieutenant Governor. Could I have consensus to add that to the agenda? Okay, thank you. All right. Any further items? Okay, so hearing none, let's entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Councilor Melanie Sampson.
I move to approve the amended agenda.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a second on that? Councilor Sean Sampson.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
All right, thank you. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, motion carried. All right, so the next is a review of the minutes from February 9th, 2021. And those have been circulated in advance for your review. So any errors or omissions that you would have noted? Okay, so hearing none, then I'll ask for a motion to approve those minutes from February 9th. Councilor Brent Sampson.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from February.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a second on that motion, please? Councilor Sean Sampson.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion on those minutes? Any questions? Okay, so all those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, motion carried. Okay, so next up are our presentations. This is our favorite part of the evening, so we'd like to welcome from La Picasse, the Centre Communitaire Culturel, Yvonne Sampson is here with us about the proposed Tourism Green Space Project in Pitye de Gras, Yvonne. If you want to come on up to the mic, there's a little red button. And yeah, you... Okay, the floor is yours. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. It's been a long time since I've done a presentation, but anyway, it's going to be a long one, but anyway, Warden Mummercat, Deputy Warden McDigden, and fellow councilors. On behalf of our project partners, I would like to take this opportunity to thank council for accepting our request for time to present our community tourism project in Pitye de Gras. I would also like to recognize that today is March 8th, which is International Women's Day, which is a global day of recognition, celebrating the social, economic, cultural, and political achievements of women and girls, and raising awareness of the work left to be done. The Pitye de Gras Beautification Society, the Pitye de Gras Harbor Authority, and La Picasse, and the Co-sédi Développement Economic de Nouvelle Écosse have partnered together through bringing to light an initiative identified in a former municipal tourism project, if you remember in 2012, I think it was. These organizations, for the most part, are social enterprises that espouse the values of community economic development, social equity, cultural identity, and sustainable development when developing projects. The long-term goal is to create jobs and quality of life for residents and visitors to our county. These organizations are made up of volunteers, and some do have staff to administer and create conditions favorable to economic development and job creation, and evidently to administer their organizations. The community members include Rubert Sanson, who is the president of the Pitye de Gras Beautification Committee Society, Norman Fugère, who manages the Pitye de Gras Harbor Authority, myself as the president of La Picasse, Josette Marchand as the executive director of La Picasse, and Aaron Ryan, which is the project officer for CDNE. One of the attractions... Is that going on? Do I have to push a button? Okay, sorry. One of the attractions of this initiative will be the Acadian Odyssey Commemorative Monument in recognition of the great upheaval or expulsion of the Acadians. At present, there are 16 monuments constructed in the world. These are five in New Brunswick, three in Nova Scotia, one in Newfoundland, four in Quebec, one in the United States in Huma in Louisiana, if people have gone to Louisiana, and one that's in France at Sapière et Miclon. The monument will include general texts in French and English about the great upheaval or expulsion, as well as a specific text, also in French and English, for the site hosting the monument. I have attached the text, but I'm going to read it in English so that you know what it's going to say. Over 300 years of Acadian presence on Almedaime, after the cession of Acadi to Great Britain in 1713, the French officials in Lewisburg invited the Acadian population to move to the colony of Il Royale. Sixty-seven Acadian families of a total of 300 people left Port Royal and settled mainly in Port Toulouse, which is St. Peters at the present moment. They brought with them their skills in agriculture, navigation, and carpentry. A number of men and women worked in Lewisburg. The census reports between 1717 and 1752 mentions names like Boucher, Boudreau, Bour, Cost, Duga, Fugère, Landry, Langlois, Marchand, Petitpa, Sampson, and Vignot. In the 1758 deportation, many of these families were deported to France. Others escaped, and when peace returned, were able to resettle in Discoos and Pitye de Gras on Almedaime, and elsewhere along the south coast of Cape Breton where they participated in the fisheries, that's Lardois, for example. Other Acadian families arrived later from Halifax, Boston, and Miclon, and settled in Nerishat and West Nerishat. Fishing, shipbuilding, and coastal shipping, and overseas trade dominated the economy. Today, Pitye de Gras is still an important fishing port and the main bastion of the French language in the region. You had... I just read that. The commemorative park will be developed on lands that are leased to the Harbor Authority and owned by the federal government. This parcel of land is located across St. Joseph's Church and alongside our Harbor Authority facilities. The community members envision a quality park infrastructure with site-friendly historical and contemporary interpretive panels to guide visitors to points of interest in the vicinity and to share local, historical, and contemporary highlights of the Acadian community. Furthermore, the park will be set up with park benches and park walk activities along our route. The design of the park includes a sunken one-foot-deep bandstand, I guess you would call it, in a half-circle style design for live entertainment and occasional team exhibits on native medicinal plants, wildlife, and the fisheries. As for the infrastructure maintenance, the park will be maintained by the Pitye de The economic development and tourism activities managed and maintained by the Harbor Authority. Specific park space will include several to three fishermen's shanties that will be built alongside the park and based on Rana Gozag shanty-style paintings, which is a little slight roof indentation, if you've seen it. These will be offered for rent to local entrepreneurs. Here, there's possibilities, there's rental for kayak and canoe rental, safety equipment, fishing gear, fresh mako, and Rana Gozag Art Gallery, which will have arts and crafts from the region, and demonstration of traditional Acadian craft food, like tamarin, which is a small candy made, it's a little bit sweet. Oops. The programming will be sponsored by La Picasse, for the most part, and also with other community partners, such as the festivals, the fishing derby that's held every summer, concerts around the circle, and self-guided tours, which will be developed during the course of this project. We estimate the total cost of the project to hover around $375,000 to $400,000. We had done an environmental scan to identify various departments and agencies and programs that can offer financial contributions toward the project. We have had discussions and are working on project proposal and are awaiting answers from these funding agencies. We have approached the private sector companies and offered the possibility of etching their company logos on the monument for a sponsorship of $10,000. Several companies and organizations investigated their interests for this type of financial contribution, and you have in front of you the plaque that was done in the Argyle region, and you see the municipality of Argyle has their own logo, and the museum, the Cabeau, which is a French organization down there, and the Fund in Halifax, and Canada 150, which was the year of the 150th anniversary. So that's on the monument. We are asking the municipality to consider a financial contribution of $15,000, or at least, on marketing sponsorships, such as etching of the municipality's logo on the monument. I want to thank you again for accepting our request to present the important community economic tourism proposal. I'm ready to answer any questions that you may have at this moment.
Thank you so much, Yvonne. That's really, really great information. So do we have any questions from council for Mr. Sampson? Councilor Sampson.
To translate that, thank you very much for the presentation. I think it's very important for our culture and the tourism industry in this county, so I appreciate the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Deputy Warden.
Yeah, a great presentation, Yvonne. Thank you very much as well. And I guess the only question I have, as you said, a $15,000 contribution, or I guess, or for the... Well, does that include the engraving? I guess if we put the...
It could, it depends how we can negotiate. If you wish, I'd appreciate the $15,000.
I'm just wondering, does that...
It could include.
Does that put your name on the plaque type of deal?
Yeah, it could include. It could include if you want.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Warden. Any other questions? Councilor Melanie Sampson.
Like everybody else, thanks for the presentation. It looks like a really lovely park. I think it'd be a wonderful addition to the community, for sure. I guess as we move into budget deliberations, my ask, I think, would be that maybe you would send along, I suspect you have like a budget proposal, right, for the other funding partners where you plan to raise the full $400,000, so perhaps that's something we could get from you to use in our deliberations, just so we know where we would maybe fit there.
If there's a procedure, or I'm not aware of, or I'd use that, but I can do a budget up, and we have the budget already, but then...
Yeah, you've sent some really great background information, but I think Melanie's speaking to the, you know, that financing piece, because it'd be helpful for us to know that, in terms of making a judgment call, and, you know, how or if we can support the project, I think.
Yep.
Yeah? So if you wanted to just send that along to either myself or the CAO, that would be helpful. Any other questions? Councilor Sampson.
Yeah, so I guess to go back, Yvonne, to go back to what Deputy Warden McDigden said, if we... You said $15,000 or $10,000 for an inscription on the plaque, so maybe we could, if we do the $15,000, that would be, you know, our logo on the plaque, plus $5,000 more or less, in goodwill more or less.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, appreciate any help we can get.
Okay.
And those shanties, those would be rented out to entrepreneurs, you say, to sell their products, or to promote area?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. The shanties have, well, some will have the canoe, yak, the kayaks, and stuff like that, but the one with the arts and crafts and different things, that will be so... It's hard to do that, because you have visitors, but they're usually not looking for that kind of thing, but if you have it in a certain area, they will probably come in and at least look and are interested in purchasing, hopefully, what we have.
Yeah. I know some of those paintings from the Picasse, you know, I mean, the pottery, that stuff is beautiful, so...
Yeah, unfortunately, it doesn't exist anymore, but his memory's still there.
Absolutely. Councilor Brent Sampson.
No, I just want to thank them again for the presentation. I think this kind of stuff is great to make a point of interest kind of thing for people coming into the county, if we want to, you know, draw in people tourism-wise. It's definitely, when there's only 16 of these monuments around, then, you know, I'm sure people seek them out from time to time to see what's there, and it looks like a really nice park design.
Yeah, definitely. Any other questions? Councilor Sean Sampson.
No question, but I'd like to put a motion forward.
Do you mind if I just mention one thing first? I just wanted to mention the shanties in particular, that's a really interesting concept, and there's lots of examples of those, and I know in St. Peters, they had done some work like that at the canal. I don't know if you've reached out to those folks, but it might be worth a conversation just to see how that went. It was, I think, a consignment-based arrangement, and it was lovely to have that activity down there, and it just makes such a difference in along the waterfront like that, so... Sorry, oh, I have another... Sorry, Deputy Warden.
Yeah, I'm just going to pipe in right quick, just because everybody, we're on the shanties and the... So I guess one of the questions I would probably have is the, it's going to, you're looking to have it sustain itself, I take it, after the...
The partners will be sustaining the allocation.
Right. As for the shanties, or the benches, or seating area, is that something that you'll be looking for, I guess, external sponsorship as well? Like, will you be, I guess, going to businesses, looking if somebody's interested in...
I'm sure we're going to try to find several ways of raising the money that we need. We don't know, as of yet, the shortfall that we'll have from the federal government. On the monument, we know exactly what we need to do, but eventually, yes, I think we're going to look at other ways of sponsoring or of raising the money that's needed for the maintenance of the area.
Okay, great.
Okay, apologies. Councilor Sean Sampson, I think you wanted to make a motion. I'll just get you to...
So I'd like to put a motion forward that we consider Mr. Yvonne Sampson's presentation and funding come budget deliberations, and we do what we can to help this project, so...
Okay, so there's a motion to refer this for consideration in budget discussions. Could I have a second on that motion? Councilor Brent Sampson.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, motion carried. Thank you very much, Mr. Sampson, for coming in. Appreciate it.
Thank you again.
Okay. All right, so we'll just give a few minutes to, for our next presenter to come up. Did you want to... Yeah, Rochelle, she's just going to take a minute there at the mic. Thank you. I know, you know the drill, right?
First, last time.
That's right, that's right. Hi, welcome, and thank you for coming in. So this is a presentation from Rochelle Sampson with SRD International Limited regarding a low-income housing project on Grandic Road. So Rochelle, I'll hand it over to you.
Hi, thank you guys for having me again tonight. So I'm here to discuss a separate project, like Warden Amanda Mummercat mentioned, an affordable housing project on Grandic Road that SRD International is looking to accomplish. So to give a bit of a project summary, we're looking to construct six duplexes, which will provide 12 units. One of those units will be completely wheelchair-accessible, and the others will be visitable. So the main difference is, you know, wheelchair-accessible is completely, like, you've got a walk-in shower, you can roll under the kitchen sink, there's just a couple different tweaks that you do. Versus visitable, you can still enter and exit in a wheelchair and visit comfortably. So the location on Grandic Road is really great. Airchat is always in high demand for housing, as it's so close to all the amenities, so your, you know, your co-ops and your jobs, really, and your St. Anne's and all those things. However, the location at this time doesn't have any water and sewer, so I know that that's been discussed with Council prior. So just to give a little personal background on myself and kind of how I got into this project, I started renting units back in, since like 2011. My father kind of gave me a bit of a summer job to rent out a home, so I kind of got into that business, and over, you know, since then have been renting out small units. In 2017, I acquired with my business partners a 10-unit apartment building in Discoos, which was previously a daycare, and we converted it over. So that's really when I got the exposure to the intense demand, need for housing. I have quite a few people who call me looking for an affordable place to rent, so not only seniors who are looking to downgrade from a home, but single parents, or small families, or just individuals coming to look at the area themselves, who can't afford to rent a big house and to kind of furnish it at the same time, and just to get an experience while they're here. So I know the, some of the stats on housing and CBRM are quite unfortunate. 70.9% of renters in Cape Breton are below the affordability standard, which is 30% of household income. So that's quite a large number. And so that's kind of why we decided to get into a project like such. We see the need, and we see the crisis, but this is a provincial crisis. This is not only in our area. Fortunately, in areas like ours in rural, it's you can't find the housing at all, versus in Halifax, where rent is just not even affordable. So as we have talked, kind of in council, with you guys about this project, needing to get water and sewer to the land to make the project affordable, we're looking to work with the public sector to make this project come true. Where it's a provincial crisis, we as a developer are really looking to, you know, work with them to try to, you know, take a piece off of this big downfall that we see. So in a grand scheme, if we had to install water and sewer ourselves and extend it to that property, we would in return not be able to keep rent low enough to offer it to the people who need it the most. And at that, we wouldn't be able to offer it to anybody, it just, the project would no longer be feasible. So we really need the province to, kind of, I think, the process is that if we put forward this project and tell the province that it's needed in this area, then they come around with funding, you know, funding applications and let the municipal, the municipality know, and in return, you guys can let developers know. So I think that's kind of the process of how that works. And so infrastructure is out there right now. We can understand that wanting to fix existing is main priority, of course, but installing new, where there's very little developable land and, you know, housing right now, it's a really great opportunity to kind of take a crack at this problem. So that's, I just kind of wanted to touch base with everyone and let them know where we were at on it, because I know we had kind of started the conversation a month or so ago, and just kind of let everyone know where we are, and that we're still tackling the project. We haven't given up, all because it seems expensive, or large, or anything of the such. It's a need, and we're definitely willing to continue to work to try to help that.
That's great. Thank you so much, Rochelle. Are there any questions for Rochelle on this project? Councilor Sean Sampson.
Yeah, first off, Rochelle, I think all of us here can attest to the fact that affordable housing is needed, you know, in this municipality, in this county, in this province, in this country, so more or less, I mean, thank you for stepping forward, and hopefully, we can see this project come true. My question would be, did you guys get in touch with any kind of local developers or excavating companies, construction companies, to see, you know, when it comes to the distance? You know, to have some sort of rough figure of what you think it would cost to put that water and sewer there?
So we did, and it was very similar to the, some of the numbers that were presented. It was quite high, and so when we did the math backwards, unfortunately, the numbers just don't make sense. We've reached out to Alana Pahn, and we've discussed the project with her, as well as Mike Callaway and other members, you know, to get it out there, and they see it, everyone sees the need, right? So it's just to, you know, kind of get the project out there, make sure people understand that it's being worked on, make sure the province knows that the municipality of the county of Richmond has this project, so that when the funding streams do open, we're kind of the first to know, and then we can jump on that and make it happen.
Right. No, that's a really great point. I think, you know, your point about it being a public partnership, we need those public partners on board to make it work, so, and it is a pressing need, absolutely. Any other questions for Ms. Sampson? Okay, well, thank you very much for being with us here tonight. It's really helpful to hear it firsthand, so thank you again. Okay, so next on our agenda is regarding a notice to be given. So at this point, I'd be looking to entertain a motion to amend bylaw number 29, the capital cost of sewer construction, in order to clarify the responsibilities of the municipality and private property owner as it relates to sewer backups and maintenance of building sewer service connections. So any discussion on that, or if not, I'll accept a motion? Deputy Warden?
Sure, I'd make the motion to accept the capital cost of sewer construction.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a second on that motion? Councilor Sean Sampson?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, so all those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, motion carried. Thank you. So next on our agenda is the CAO regarding accessibility committee applications. So Dawn, I'll hand that over to you.
So as part of the accessibility directorate and the requirements for the municipality to create an accessibility committee prior to April 1st of 2021, we put out a request for applications for individuals to join in the committee, and we did get four respondents. And also, as part of that requirement, it's council's responsibility to, in fact, approve those members for the committee, and that's why we're taking it forward this evening. And as you can see in your, in your agenda and your programs, the four individuals are there. You can accept all four, or you can accept less. It's totally up to yourselves.
And maybe just as a point of information, I'll mention that the accessibility toolkit provided by the province of Nova Scotia does recommend at least two people, and those two people would, you know, they should be members of the disability community, or work, you know, in an organization that supports people with disabilities, so...
Councilor Brent Sampson.
So would there be any issue with appointing all four?
Not at all. It's entirely up to council to decide what that committee structure is going to be.
Because I thought reading through all four, they all seemed like, you know, they had quite an interest, and it was, yeah. I'm just glad it wasn't one that we had to pick.
Counselor Sean Sampson.
Yeah, I have to agree with Councilor Sampson, reading up on all four applicants, they're great applicants, all four of them. And my only thing is if we had to pick two, maybe one from each area, one from the mainland, one from the island, but if we're going to pick four, then I guess we have two and two, right? Because there are twos from the mainland, twos from the island, so four great applicants, and I thank them all for reaching out and applying.
Dawn?
Yeah, so just a little clarification there, it's, there are four, but the requirements indicate that 50% of your committee needs to have either a disability...
Right.
...or be working in an atmosphere or an environment that has disabled people, either dwelling in it or part of. So if those four had applied, as long as two were in that, qualified based on that criteria, then you could still accept all four. It's just, the 50% rule is half need to be in that. It's just the, the fifty percent rule is half need to be in that, in that criteria.
Well, I think, I think by reading up, I think a hundred percent of them are.
But yeah, you're, you're right. That's exactly right.
Counselor Melanie Sampson?
Exactly. That was exactly my point. I think that as reading through the application, there were a couple of people who identified as, as being part of the disabled community and then two others having worked closely with folks in that community as well. So I think it's actually a really great mixture of people in that we have. Yeah, exactly. So I would wholeheartedly support recommending all four.
Okay. So we would also need to discuss the presence of a staff member potentially on that committee and as well as a councillor potentially on that committee. And I do know, we, you know, we do have an item later on the agenda regarding our committee structure, so we don't need to make any decisions about who at this point, but just want to put that on the radar, that it is something we'll need to proceed with at some point in time. But for now, I think, yeah, to Melanie's point, a motion approving all four members to this accessibility committee with the structure to be determined, the remainder of the structure to be determined at a later date. So Melanie, was that the motion you were, you were making? Yeah, okay. So it's moved, so I'll just accept a seconder. Deputy Warden?
Yeah, I'll definitely second that.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, motion carried. Thank you and a special thanks to those individuals. And maybe we should just name them. It's Kelly Hibbert, Marcelline Cian Farani, I might not be pronouncing that right. Maxine David and Natalie Groom. So thank you, a special thanks to them. All right. So moving on, the next item on our agenda is regarding West Richmond Education Center. And essentially this item, wanted to add to the agenda as a result in part related to discussions at Cape Breton Recruiting, Cape Breton South Recruiting for Health meetings and just the, the concept of trying to make the hospital location a more attractive place to be able to attract physicians to and, and have other activities going on in that region. And so conversation had been taking place around, you know, whether or not we could have a, a bit of a joint, you know, maybe a discussion at, at the CBSRH group related to this piece of infrastructure. If maybe a bit of a task force could be established to investigate what options might be, what might exist related to that school and its usefulness alongside the hospital. So basically wanted to put it out there for council to discuss, to get your thoughts on it. You know, is there information from staff that might be helpful in determining whether or not the building would have some use if it was repurposed, that kind of thing, so. Thoughts from folks? Counselor Melanie Sampson?
I would just be interested to hear from CIO Marshawn because I know when we originally were sort of updated on county items when we were first sworn in, it was certainly a topic of conversation. And I know there was some issues with the land and our ability to do anything with it because maybe it was still being migrated or something. So I'm just wondering if perhaps there's an update, also the condition of the building over the past few years?
Go ahead, Dawn.
Okay, sorry. In fact, I did get an update just as recently as today regarding the, the migration of the property. And our legal people believe that there are only a few more documents left to record and we're looking at likely a, we're hoping to have a, a migration date by the end of March. So once that's done, then we'd be looking at potentially making a decision then regarding the fate of, of the, of the school. However, I mean, there are, there are possibilities there and we could as a staff get some more information. I mean, there, there, when, when the school was handed over to the county, there, there were some reports done and some assessments done of the building and, and the grounds and the interior. So although it has gone into a state of, of, well, I wouldn't say disrepair, but it's, it's been a while since anything has been done to it. So it would be wise to maybe get someone to go in there and evaluate what potentially might, might be a cost associated with sort of, you know, bringing it to a point where it would be, people would be able to, to go in it. We know there are some, some serious issues. There, there have been some, some windows broken and some heating issues that have plagued the building. And of course, we all know what happens when there's no heat in a building. So it would be a wise idea to perhaps get staff to maybe investigate some costs related to repairs.
Okay. Counselor Melanie Sampson?
So perhaps that information, you know, sort of circling back to Warden Moberkett's thoughts here about creating a bit of a task force between the Cape Breton South Recruiting for Health group and then the county. Perhaps if we did create such a task force, then the, then staff could report to that committee to just discuss the condition and then what the options might be for that group, right? Because I think depending on what the condition is, it will determine sort of what their, where their thoughts, I suspect, will go with the property.
Dawn?
I guess I would prefer that staff provide a, a report to, to council and then council could basically take it from there and decide what, which, which route they would like to take.
Counselor Sean Sampson?
Yeah, for, for me, I mean, you all know how I feel about the, the West Richmond School. Again, when we look at the strategic plan from 2019 to 2024, page forty-nine has infrastructure, planning and a picture of the, of the school. So I mean, yeah, you know where I feel with that and yeah, we gotta invest in that building or, or at least look at doing something with it for sure.
Yeah. Dawn?
One thing I, I would just like to have you folks keep in mind is that if, if that was the route that we would take with respect to perhaps checking out some, some costs associated with refurbishing it or whatever, I think the timeframe is, is not just a couple of weeks or a couple of months. It's, it's several months, maybe, you know, quite a while down the road. So just keep that in mind when we, when we're deciding on how, how to approach it.
All right. Any other comments on that? Counselor Sean Sampson?
Yeah, just, would we know, would you know our FAN CEO, how long that building has been closed?
I think we've had owners, sorry. I think we've, we, the keys were passed to us. It must be eight to ten years. I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. I would, I would dare say it was maybe four or five years ago when, when the, I believe one of the boilers malfunctioned.
Okay, sorry. Counselor Melanie Sampson, did you have another question?
I'd just be prepared to put a motion forward to ask staff to gather information on the condition of the building so we can determine next steps.
Okay. All right, so there's a motion on the table to have staff gather information on the building. Deputy Warden?
Yeah, I just have a quick question, I guess, for our CEO. Prior to, I guess, staff gathering information, do we have anybody on staff that is, I don't mean to sound rude, but qualified to assess the inside of a structure to, like, I know we have our Public Works guys and we have everything else, but do we have somebody that can give us an estimate of repairs or a cost?
There, there is no one, no one on staff. So essentially, I think, I think what, what the starting point there would be, would be likely to hire a, an engineer, a consulting engineering firm to determine what needs to be fixed, first of all. And then, then they could, they could sort of tabulate, I guess, add it up as, as to what it would cost to do the repairs. It would, it would likely be a significant line item in the budget. So I think it might be something we may want to pass on to budget deliberations if you so choose to make a motion to, to have staff calculate some costs or require costing.
Yeah, and again, that's my concern is that, I guess, we've already lost a boat where we, where the building, again, like other structures have, are costing us money now that the heat has been either turned off or the building not checked when the heat went out. I just feel, I feel maybe it might be more appropriate if, if it needs a furnace or if it needs heat, then we call for a burner technician to give us a cost. And if it needs plumbing, we get a plumber to cost us as opposed to getting an engineer to go in and, and recost that, the whole evaluation of the building and costing us more money. Where we can honestly, if, if somebody's going to quote on repairs and get, submit for quotes and that way they're, it's not costing us anything.
Counselor Melanie Sampson?
The nature of my motion really was more to just have someone go to the building, walk around and just gather a, a list, you know? The, the furnace isn't working, there's five windows broken, the, you know, like just really a, a basic list. I wasn't really thinking about costing at this point. Because I, you know, I think first we'd need to see the scope of work we're talking about before we would even, in my opinion, entertain the gathering of quotes and that large quantity of work. Because we may just find that there's just so many parts that are broken that it may not be fixable, right? So I, I just, I would, my, the nature of my motion was simply to have staff gather information on the condition of the building, to just give us a report of what they see when they're there.
So there is a motion on the table. Is there anyone interested in seconding that motion or further discussion? Counselor Sean Sampson?
Yeah, I'll second that motion, yeah.
Any further discussion? Okay, so all those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, motion carried. All right, thank you, everyone. Okay, so the next item is the communications plan, which had been on our agenda some time ago when staff had provided some background information on how the original plan had been kind of formulated and some of the gaps therein. Recently though, it's come to my attention that the Cape Breton Partnership has hired a communications coordinator. I hope I'm getting that title correct. I haven't met this person yet, but was interested in hearing from council as to whether or not you thought there might be some opportunity for some synergy there to work with them to develop, to refresh that communications plan as had been discussed previously. Any thoughts from council? Counselor Sean Sampson?
Yeah, well, I mean, for me, and, and I can appreciate the, the request from Cape Breton Partnership, but I mean, when we look at our organizational review put together by SPL, Human Capital Resources on June twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen, page eleven states that we have our own communication plan. And I'd just be interested to see how much of this was followed since the last four years.
Right. So I did want to, and I'm sorry if I was unclear there, but the Cape Breton Partnership hasn't requested. But I just reached out to them to see if there might be some opportunity there.
Yeah, so I mean, for me, looking at this organizational review, it looks like we already have a communication plan in place.
We do. Yeah, we had talked about, though, that it's not, it's basically, it's not accurate. The communications plan refers to some elements that don't exist here on staff and, and has, it's not very specific. And so the idea was to kind of refresh that, maybe with support from the partnership because they have that expertise on their staffs, but the communications plan would be ours for us to follow.
So we're going to revamp this?
The communica, I don't know, is that the comms plan? Is that the one you're looking at? Yeah, that was the idea. So, sorry, Dawn?
Yeah, the communication plan that I think you're referencing, Warden, is the one that was just created just over the last.
The one that's on the website, yeah, I can't see.
I'm not familiar with what Counselor Sampson is referring to. From what I understand, there was no communication plan prior to the one that was created in two thousand eighteen.
Okay. There's, there's reference to it in this document though that I, I see that you have there, right? Is that, is that the org review?
Yeah, this, this review is pretty extensive.
Yeah.
It speaks of a communication plan.
It speaks about one. There, there was one created a year or two back, two years? Yeah, yeah, but it, again, it's not, like I said, it's not accurate and it's, and yeah. So Counselor Melanie Sampson?
So yeah, so first of all, the plan is a couple of years old. Second of all, it was created and approved by a different council in frankly, a different day, a different world where we weren't as, even as tuned in, I think, to social media and all of those pieces as we are today. I can speak to the work that the Cape Breton Partnership, the, the folks there that, that work in the communications field have been amazing. I know from working, from, you know, sitting in on the Cape Breton South Recruiting for Health, they're, they've been super valuable to them and, and we see a lot of the other work that the partnership is doing to help in those areas. So I can't see it being something that could hurt. You know, if they're willing to help us revive, revise, whatever, to this communication plan, I would say we should definitely do it. It's, it's quite important. It's something we all heard from residents when we were running for council. They wanted, you know, a real solid, this is the plan, plan. And so I would support working with them, with the partnership if they're interested in working with us.
Counselor Sean Sampson?
Yeah, no, I agree with Counselor Melanie Sampson and for sure, I look forward to working with Cape Breton Partnership. Like Counselor Sampson says, we heard that many a times during our campaign. We need to better engage, we need to better communicate with our residents. So we gotta, we gotta get this communication plan in place and, and do what we have to do to fix it for sure.
So at this point, I guess I would suggest that a motion be made asking staff to coordinate with the Cape Breton Partnership on the development of the refreshed communications plan. Counselor Sampson?
Yeah, I would put that motion forward, yes.
Okay. Deputy Warden?
Hey, there's the light. Yeah, I, I spelled left out for a minute, I kept pushing the button, but that's all right. Yeah, I'll definitely second that motion. And I agree with Counselor Sean Sampson, I believe that, and Counselor Melanie Sampson. The past was the past, but I also believe that if, in moving forward when we go with this communication plan and it's ours, we have to put a drive on for it. We can't let it slip through the cracks like the last one.
Okay. So the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, motion carried. Thanks, everyone. Okay, so next on the agenda is our committee structure. And this is really kind of more of an informational piece at this stage. It's just, and I've spoken with each of you, I think, individually at some point or another regarding the structure that we approved in November, I think it was, of two thousand twenty. It seems like a really long time ago, but it's not that long. We did find some discrepancies between the structure that was approved and what sort of was required based on certain bylaws. And so there's still some work that had to be done on that structure. Over time, these things just kind of get lost, they get lost in the detail, I think. Additionally, you know, I do want to remind councilors that that committee structure originally was established when there was a council of ten and now there's a council of five. And so right now, you know, we have a mix of councillors involved in committees, members at large involved in committees, appointees on our behalf involved in committees as well as staff. So at this point, I would just like to, I guess, ask for any feedback on that from you as we move towards a refreshed restructure that looks like, that is more aligned with what the, the bylaws and the number of people we have here at the, at the council table can, can afford. So any questions, thoughts on that? Okay. Counselor Sean Sampson?
Yeah, well, first off, Warden Moberkett, thank you very much for the detailed work on that structure. That's, that's, yeah, it's a lot of work on your behalf and I appreciate it. What did stick out to me and what I'd like to see happen is that on the bylaw policy committee, you had maybe one or two members at large looking to get people from the public. And I think that's very important for people from the public to be on that committee. So I would welcome that in the future for sure.
Right, right. Okay, thank you, Counselor Sean Sampson. Melanie?
Yeah, I absolutely echo Counselor Sampson's thanks for all the work that you. Uh, yeah, I absolutely echo, uh, Counselor Sampson's. Thanks for all the work that you did in gathering the information. It was very helpful and it, it's, uh, very sobering when you see really the quantity of work that we are tasked with in terms of committee work. Um, and you know, I think we've talked about this before, right? You know, right now, we're doing a lot of meetings, uh, virtually, electronically, which doesn't involve any travel. And I, I am concerned about our ability to properly serve, or, you know, to, to serve, um, these committees and maintain a balance when we start to meet in person again. So I definitely would welcome a conversation about the committee structure and, and, um, you know, tapping into some of the interests that we've seen, uh, from many members of Richmond County who are interested to serve on our behalf or to serve, you know, with us. Um, and I, you know, I think that if we ask for more people to help us in sitting on some of these committees and reporting back to us, I, I feel confident we're going to get, uh, that support. So I definitely, um, would, um, would welcome that. I, and I guess I also wonder where is the appropriate place to have that conversation? So I guess I would open that to the other counselors. It, it seems like it, it may be a, a bit of a conversation and I'm not, just not sure if it, if it's something that we could maybe talk about in, you know, uh, a bylaw policy committee or something. I'm not sure. So I'm just throwing that out, that, you know, I'd like to see a good conversation about it and, um, I'm just not sure where that would sit.
Right. You know, and maybe this is something that we could have facilitated in a, you know, workshop-style format by, you know, just to help us sort of identify and prioritize, because this really is related to a strategic planning exercise. It's very much a strategic planning exercise actually, because it, it is going to require us to establish priorities and, and, um, and le-, and leadership positions and that type of thing, right? So, um, but any, if there's no further questions, I think we can move on. I wasn't anticipating a motion on this this evening. I, it was just more for informational purposes and I wanted to get some feedback from you at this point. So, sorry, Counselor Melanie Sampson?
On, on a related note, I guess I would say that, uh, as per the bylaws of the straight area transit, uh, we are, um, I hate to use the word required, but I think that's probably appropriate to have two counselors on that, uh, committee. And so currently, I am the only, uh, Richmond County counselor who's been, um.
Appointed.
Appointed, yeah. So I, I would, we're going to need to add a second person, which I think we've talked a little bit about. And, um, if it's appropriate under this agenda item, I would, I would like to open that conversation, please.
Certainly. Absolutely. Uh, Deputy Warden?
Yeah, I would just like to, um, when were you looking to structure, not structure, or I guess go over the, um, the places or the placements of?
This isn't as soon as possible, um, discussion in my mind, um, just so that we are, like Counselor Melanie Sampson said, tapping into the strength of the people of Richmond County and serving them as best as, you know, in the best way that we can, so.
Yeah, and I, and I agree. So I'm just wondering at this time, is it, uh, is it too late or too early to hold off an extra week or so for the, uh, added person for the straight area, just to see what's on everybody's plate or where everybody's going to be diverse? You know, maybe we can settle, we can agree on that at the, uh, at the same discussion if, I don't know if that's appropriate or not appropriate.
Counselor Melanie Sampson?
The next meeting of the transit is at the end of the month, so I think, you know, we certainly have a couple of weeks that we could make that decision. So we perhaps could finalize that at the regular council meeting, so perhaps we'd add that to the agenda.
Okay. Alright, so we'll ask staff to make a note of the straight area transit in particular for the next agenda. Um, and then I think we'll, any further comments on that committee structure? Okay, so at this point, um, I'd like to relinquish the chair for the next item on the agenda, so I'll ask the deputy warden to, um, to take over.
Alright. Well, the first thing she told me before sat in the seat is not to get comfortable. So I guess we're doing a one item and, uh, then I'm going to be moving on. But the, uh, next item on the agenda is the, uh, St. Peter's River Tiller Trail, and, uh, Amanda's got some.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Warden, and I did not say that to him at all. So, um, I just wanted to bring this item to counsel on behalf of, uh, the, you know, uh, several constituents in District Four, regarding the River Tiller to St. Peter's Trail, the three kilometers, and looking at potentially, uh, changing the designation of that trail to multi-use. So just to give you some background, um, the, the section of trail that we're talking about is owned by the provincial government, um, and the East Richmond ATV riders are, uh, event, going to be seeking a letter of authority to upgrade and manage that section of the trail as a multi-use, uh, trail. They're modeling their efforts after the Celtic Shores Coastal Trail, uh, which is, runs along the, uh, the west coast of the island. I think it's about ninety-seven kilometers from Port Hastings to Inverness County. Uh, the key though, um, to this small stretch of trail is that it will connect, um, to the wider use, the wider multi-use trail network, so that it becomes a destination like the Celtic Shores Coastal Trail. And so that the commercial district of St. Peter's becomes a premier stop or launchpad along that destination trail. And in your package, I did include several pictures that show the quality of that, the coastal trail in Inverness County. So you're really getting a sense of the potential, the signage, the clear rules established for use, um, that kind of thing. With these upgrades, we can anticipate that the trail will become more widely used, um, with prevalent signage. And, you know, there's already, um, you know, there's, there's always the concern that how will this be policed to make sure that you don't have, um, you know, ATVs going at excessive speeds? And that the bottom line is, is that with a more widely-used trail, um, gates to slow traffic and to increase safety. And trail users essentially become the watchdogs of, of that type of public infrastructure. Several association members in this region have already taken what's called a trail patroller course. So they wear a vest, they're by no means the law, but they are very, uh, they're visible. Um, they have a responsibility to report when, uh, issues arise. But, and, and they also are a resource for first responders should that come up. But in general, the community of users becomes the watchdog on the trail. And that model has been used successfully in other areas where multi-use trails run close to communities' homes, roads, et cetera, which would be the case here. And main, the main concern is that the railway bed is eroding at three significant spots and that's, it's steadily getting worse. Um, it's going to need armor rock work done before it's lost to the community. And I do know there's a community group in the village, uh, now, looking to do some stabilization on that piece of trail. And I, I commend them for their efforts because it absolutely needs to be done. Um, however, that stabilization, uh, in, in my mind, you know, as much as it is needed, it's, to me, it's not the end of the discussion for that trail. Um, you know, when you're talking about the potential economic development around it. The business community has come out strongly in favor of this, of this designation to multi-use. Um, and several community groups have also provided letters of support in that regard. Uh, the East Richmond ATV trail riders do have a history of, um, of trail development. Over the past two years, they've been working on upgrading trails along the railbed, including installing gates at entrances with barricades, signage, all of the things that you would come to expect of a, of a multi-use trail that meets that, that, uh, standard, that type of standard. They've spent in excess of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in doing so, and they're now ready to move forward with new projects specifically with this section of the trail. So I wanted to bring this to counsel for discussion, um, as an initiative that I think would be, uh, extremely beneficial economically and socially to the community. I would also like to say very clearly that I am one hundred percent in favor of walking trails as part of a wider trails network in the county. I think that we need a really strong mix of multi-use, walking trails, cycling trails, to make sure that we're providing residents with the active transportation options and, you know, and the recreational options that they need, uh, and that they, that, that they're entitled to. Um, these things are directly connected to our quality of life. Uh, living here in Richmond County has its, has its benefits and it would be wonderful to see this kind of, um, this kind of integrated trail network, uh, exist in our county. And the bottom line is, is that because the trail is on a specific section of railbed, um, by, by virtue of the fact that it is a form of railbed, it, it makes it more suitable for a multi-use, uh, opportunity as opposed to trying to establish brand-new trail to do so, um, because you have that, uh, you have that pre-existing, uh, infrastructure. So I think, um, I know that Richmond County Council has provided a letter of support for East Richmond ATV riders in the past regarding this issue. But again, as you stated earlier, Counselor Sampson, this is a new council, it's a new time. Um, we have an opportunity to reaffirm council's support, uh, for the province to designate the River Tiller to St. Peter's Trail as multi-use. Um, to issue the East Richmond ATV riders a letter of authority to assume management of the trail. But also for the municipality to begin to advocate on behalf of, uh, on their behalf of getting this piece of work done. And not to stop with this one piece of trail, but to look at our wider trails network, reexamine our trail strategy, refresh it, and turn it into a tourism and economic development driver for the county. So I'd ask you, entertain any questions you might have regarding that matter?
Anybody with, um, any questions?
Yeah, I've, um, I'm familiar with the section of trail you're talking about. I've used it in the past, both, uh, walking and cycling. And, and one thing I can say is beautiful stretch of trail, definitely underutilized. Um, the times I did go on it, you rarely met anybody. Um, looking at the model in Inverness County, it's fantastic, you know? Um, I'm familiar with it outside of this. Um, I think there's definitely opportunity there to have a multi-use trail. It's not, it's not just about one thing. But right now, the way it is, in my opinion, it doesn't seem to be getting its full potential. And I, I totally agree. I think this could be a, a big difference for even the businesses in St. Peter's. And, uh, you know, for getting people, connecting people from different parts of the county, travel one end to the other and, uh, and, and be able to stop in and support some of the local businesses.
Alright. Thank you. When we have, um, any more comments on this issue? I'd like to, uh, just weigh in a little bit, and I agree, the, uh, the trails are, uh, are beautiful and a little bit of work. And, uh, maybe, uh, you know, maybe at this time, um, I don't know if we need a motion to, um, support or issue a letter of authority to, uh, support the ATV Riders Club, but it wouldn't hurt to, uh, put one present.
Certainly, and, and I would, I would absolutely make that motion, uh, to reaffirm council's support by issuing a, a letter of support for the province to de-, to designate the River Tiller to St. Peter's, three kilometers of trail as multi-use. And further to advocate, uh, on their behalf to get this piece of work done as a municipal council.
Alright, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Counselor Brent Sampson. All in favor, raise your hand. Contradicted, motion carried. At this time, I guess, uh, I have to relinquish back this chair. She's smiling over there saying, "Get out." So, uh, we'll move on to the next item.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Okay, so the next item on our, on our agenda, we're going to move into correspondence. And there's several pieces where action is required. The first is, um, a letter from the Clean Ocean Action Committee. This was regarding a letter of support, um, to essentially, I believe it was re-establish, uh, renew, sorry, the, uh, moratorium on, um, on oil and gas exploration on George's Bank. And the group did send a, a fairly detailed letter, um, and, uh, so I would entertain any comments from counsel. Um, they're, they're essentially asking for, um, that, a letter to go from counsel to the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities, um, and, uh, and a resolution to be passed, um, regarding the renewal, uh, or the, uh, the renewal of the moratorium on George's Bank. So any, any questions, comments from counselors on this item? Counselor Melanie Sampson?
So my challenge is, of course, I'm, I'm not really familiar with, you know, the, the letter is quite detailed, but there's always two sides to everything, and so I, I don't really know the other side. So I guess I would ask the question, you know, uh, in the past, is this something that council has supported? Have we offered letters of support, uh, for this previously? Um, and I would be looking perhaps to other counselors who may be more informed about the topic than I am to share.
I'm not sure, Dawn, if you, if you would know if we've issued a letter like that in the past? Yeah.
Um, yeah, there, there's nothing that, that, that I can recall, and, uh, the clerk has indicated that she has searched it and wasn't able to find anything, so.
Okay. Counselor Brent Sampson?
Yeah, it kind of felt similar to Counselor Melanie Sampson after reading this the other day. But, you know, I mean, the, the importance of our fishing industry here can't be understated.
Mm-hmm.
Um, however, I don't, I, I, I don't know that I'd feel that, uh, I'd be qualified enough at this point to, to make a, you know, make a move one way or another on this without having more information, for sure.
Deputy Warden?
Um, yeah, I guess, I, uh, I worked seven years offshore, so I'm not, uh, not to say I'm any more qualified than anybody else around the table, for sure. And I'm no geologist, but I do know that the, uh, the fishing off of, uh, Grand Banks, Newfoundland, and then off of, uh, George's Banks, um, were definitely not affected by any, uh, any offshore drilling or any exploration at that time. And I mean, scientific evidence pretty much shows that, however, again, it would be nice to have some feedback from the other side to, uh, before we rule, before, I guess, we make a decision. But I would have no problem with a letter of support at this time.
Okay. Counselor Melanie Sampson?
I, I think the only thing that when I had read the material, you know, is that where it did say that the Federation of Nova Scotia Municipalities, um, is in support of extending the moratorium on the oil and, and gas exploration. So that gave me a little bit of confidence, I guess, in the suitability of, of such a, um, letter of support. So I guess I would just point that out to counselors.
Yeah, and to, and to your point about, you know, not, enough information and understanding the issue fully, um, obviously if NSFM has provided a letter of support, then they probably have some additional experience. And there's no harm in us consulting with them in advance of making a motion to, to provide any letter of support. This could be tabled to a future meeting to give us a little more time to gather information, if that's the desire of counsel.
Okay. Oh, sorry, Deputy Warden?
Yeah, no, I, I agree. Maybe we could, uh, table it for our next meeting. And if, I don't know if we have enough time between now and then to reach out and get some information back. But it would, uh, there's no harm in waiting a couple of weeks or a month to, uh, before we put the motion forward.
Okay. Any other questions then, or comments on this matter? I don't think we need a motion to, to table this, or, or do we? CAO? Do we need a motion to table that, or no? Okay, we could just, we can move this to the next agenda and, um, and consult with NSFM and others to gather some more information. And, uh, certainly we would let, um, we will let the writer of this letter know that as well, because I want to make sure that we're keeping them in the loop, and that was John Davis, uh, who's a director with Clean Ocean Action Committee, so. Oh, sorry, Counselor Melanie Sampson?
So the letter was addressed to both yourself and CA Omar, so I, maybe we should decide on who will reply?
Sure, yes, yep. I'm happy to do so, or?
Either way.
Yep, okay. Alright, so I can do that. Any other questions on that? Okay, so we'll move on. Um, the next, uh, item on the agenda is a, again, a letter of support from the Ayrshire Community Development Association. And I apologize, but I just lost my screen here, so, um, someone who has that document up, would you care to give a little summary while I bring this back up, please? Deputy Warden?
I sabotaged it while I was up there.
You did.
So it, it reads as follows, "Dear Warden Mumbercat, I'm emailing on behalf of the Ayrshire Community Development Association to request a letter of support for our park project on behalf of the Richmond County Recreation Department. We're not looking for any type of contribution, commitment at this time. Moreover, a basic letter stating that the addition of this park to Richmond County is supported by the municipality and aligns with the Department of Recreation Strategies to increase opportunities and enhance, excuse me, support for physical activities." We're hoping to add this letter to our CHCI grant application on March eighth, twenty twenty-one. Aside from the letter, as budget deliberations are upcoming, we would ask that the council discuss the following options. As potential ways to contribute to this project. One, discount on water sewer property taxes. Two, public works to be responsible to clear the garbage. Number three, Department of Recreation and to purchase skates for rent for individuals to use the rink. Number four would be lawn care. Number five, driveway snow removal. And uh they're open to suggestions as well as would appreciate the support.
Thank you Deputy Warden, I think. So uh so we've, we've got two requests in here, so the first is a letter of support. To attach to their CHCI grant application. And you'll note the time sensitivity on that of March eighth, and I know in the past when we run into that. Um, because we've had a committee of the whole at the beginning of the month. Um, we've, we've made a, a motion at committee of the whole to provide such a letter of support. And then I, then I let uh the com- the, the previous committee know that that was, that was the motion at committee of the whole, but that it wouldn't be. Essentially formally approved until the, the regular council meeting later that month. But at least they were able to provide that notification with their grant application. We could look at doing the same here if council so chooses to support the project. Um, and then the second would be to uh refer the project to budget deliberations as well. Councillor Brent Sampson?
Yeah, I'd like, I'd be prepared to make a motion that we uh draft a letter to. Get our support behind the project and that uh we refer the other options to budget deliberations.
Okay, thank you Councillor Brent Sampson. Councillor Melanie Sampson?
I wholeheartedly second that.
Okay, great. Um, any further questions or comments? Okay, so all those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, motion carried. Thank you, everyone. So what I'll do is I will let uh Ms. Sampson know that, that that motion's been made at committee of the whole and um. And to anticipate it being approved at regular council. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a request, a, a letter from the Pan Cape Breton Food Hub Co-op. Um, and it's a funding request. Um, I won't read through the entire l- letter, um. But essentially, the, the Pan Cape Breton Food Hub has provided, I think, a presentation or. Was it the last special council meeting, I believe, that Alicia Lake was here? Um, and gave us an overview of what the food hub does and specifically in Richmond County and uh the, the work that's gone on here with it. Um, they are seeking a grant of fifteen thousand dollars from each of the four municipalities in Cape Breton. Including Richmond County um to help them expand and maintain their footprint here. Um, in this county as part of their island initiative. So does anybody have any comments or questions on that this time? Councillor Brent Sampson?
So um, I did a little bit of research on this. They, they presented as well on the committee of the whole on May thirteenth, twenty nineteen. And I know there was a similar ask for fifteen thousand then. Um, what's the history of our financial support from the county? Is that uh, has that been ongoing or is that?
Don?
Um, there, there was no support financially last year.
Okay. Yeah, so I was just wondering if that would be something, um, I, I guess we're going to refer it to budget deliberations, but it'd be something that would be. New, not an, it's not an ongoing thing, okay.
Right. And there may have been contributions previous years. The Pancake Breton Food Hub is a, is a few years old now. I feel like there may have been some support.
Yeah, the letter says things throughout, it's like.
Right, yeah. Yep, so we can look at that and consider that in budget as well. Okay, so we'll refer this one to budget deliberations then. I don't think we need a motion for that. Um, and the next item is the Dr. Kingston Memorial Health Centre regarding their emergency funding request. Um, so this um, this letter was sent in uh regarding, obviously, the. The number of physicians is, I guess, at the core of the problem. Um, and in terms of how the uh, the Memorial Health Centre generates revenue based on those physicians. Now, Councillor Brent Sampson, I, this is in your district, this facility, I don't know if there's. If you would like to speak to it in advance, the, the letter's been circulated to everyone.
Yeah, I, I do have some good points here.
Could you um, could you just press your button? Thank you.
Um, I do have some other points here depending what um questions come up. I, i- is it possible at all for, we do have the Chair of the Board here this evening, for her to be able to answer questions on this, or that's not, would that be?
Certainly is possible, absolutely, I mean.
Okay, is that, it's not out of order or anything?
No, no, we, we've had Mr. Bain come in and answer questions and.
So I believe we, we do have somebody here that would be even better qualified than myself to answer questions on this.
That's great.
Um, I, I mean, I don't think uh, the biggest thing here, if everybody's read the letter, um, it's, it's a lot more than. It's a lot more than simply a clinic, let's say. You know, i- it is the community health centre. They've been doing a lot of work um in administering several grants over the last number of years. There are several grants that are being administered at the moment. Um, if they were to end up in a position where it had to shut down for some point in time. Not only would be, you know, looking at uh the half a dozen people are so employed there, but also. It would, it would kind of may put into jeopardy some of the administration of these grants that are being handled by them right now. Um, so it's hard to understate the importance of, you know, this uh. This health centre to the, the county as a whole. Um, you know, we've had Michelle in here from the Senior Safety Coordinator. Um, that's, you know, um, much of what she does is administered through there. Um, there, there's, there's several. The uh Cape Breton South Recruiting for Health uh group is, you know, is a partnership somewhat administered through that. Um, I think uh Ms. Mumbrickett would be probably better have to answer these questions than I would, but uh. I think we uh, it's incumbent on us to try and figure out some kind of a way to, to move forward on this. I know they're not looking for this to be long-term. It's uh, they've been working with the province to try and come up with some creative solutions here moving forward. It's just that without having a second physician there for about a year or so now. It's, it's created a financial shortfall that now it's uh, you know, it's, it's, it's getting to a point where something has to be done.
Okay, and I guess I would, I guess the question I would ask is what, like. What is the core of, of the problem here in terms of the revenue generation? I mean, my understanding from the letter is that it is directly related to the loss of a physician. Is the three thousand dollars per month like the total operating cost? Is it just the portion related to that physician? So maybe, I guess I would, I, I would invite uh is Juanita Mumbrickett to, to come up, if, if you don't mind answering a couple of questions? Yeah. That would be great, thank you. So um, Juanita, I'll just get you to hit the red button. So. Uh, you did not, no, there we go. So you're on. So, so essentially, like, can you tell me a little bit about the three thousand dollars per month? Like where does that, like, is it the whole cost to operate the building? Is it just the portion of the lost physician? Where, what does that look like exactly?
Um, so each physician that we have currently, our current rate that we charge them is three thousand dollars a month.
Okay.
So that revenue that we are, have lost is just that much. There's a much larger budget that we uh have to operate the building, to have the staff, to have the. You know, all the maintenance of the building, et cetera. So that's just three thousand for that one physician that we're missing. And we have been missing since March, maybe last year. She left mid-March.
Yeah.
Around now, I guess.
Yes, I think so, yeah, yeah. Okay, are there any questions from councillors for Juanita while she's kindly accepted the mic?
Please.
Deputy Warden?
Yeah, I'd just like to uh thank you, Juanita, for coming in and uh getting thrown under the bus by your councillor from uh. Your district and taking it very well, I must add. The uh. No, I um, so I know three thousand is the cost of the doctor, I guess, that's gone. Or the rent, I guess, more or less you would cover. Um, is there anything else? I guess, is there anything else that's been in place for if the doctor cannot be replaced at any short time? Or is there anything else in the, I guess, in the broad future, if you can't find a doctor or replace him, to fill that void for the, I guess, financial?
Well, we're, I mean, we've been working since a year, more than a year. Um, we were, uh, I, I would think instrumental in getting the Cape Breton South Recruiting for Health organisation. Started and, and working all of the angles that that organisation has, you know, been working towards. Um, we have also been, uh, you know, we reached out to Mike Callaway. And, you know, early in the game to see what could happen there. We've reached out a few times to NSHA and the Department of Health and Wellness to look for innovative solutions there. Uh, we're still working with them to try to find a different uh solution for our organisation. We're, we're also a member of the Nova Scotia Association of Community Health Centres. And there are some interesting funding uh models for a couple of the other. Community health centres in the province, so we're, we're trying to, you know, discuss that with the Nova Scotia Health Authority. Um, we also do have a few um. Infrequent renters who come in to do some other types of health services from our, our building, and we always try to offer that. Because we do have a little bit of space that we could offer. Uh, we have been recently getting um some requests about renting space in the building, so. Uh, we are, you know, we have those requests and we're providing information back and forth to some of these other groups. Um, and, yeah, so we're, I mean, we're doing a whole bunch of things to try to find a solution. For the uh loss of the physician's income, and we're not for profit, so it's not like we're trying to. Make money here, we're trying to cover our operating costs. Um, so that's kind of some of the, some of the things, and we will, I mean, as the letter. States, we aren't gonna, you know, just give up on those, those, you know, those activities that we're doing. I mean, that's. We're trying to find a viable long-term solution, and we also want, you know, the, the services that the centre provides. Um, it's, it's all this grant work and, and there's a list of uh. Significant sum of money that has been brought into the area through the, this organisation and, and. But it's also the primary healthcare's collaborative practice. It's a turnkey operation for healthcare professionals. They don't have to hire their own. Administration staff, so there's a whole bunch of uh benefits in that organisation and. And if it, if it were, it's also a community building that was a lot of fundraising. It brought the community together when they built that building, so it's, it's very personal, I think, to the, the local community. Uh, while it still supports the broader community and. Uh, I think as well, some of the people that are in the group right now that are being supported by, like Sherry. Uh, administering some of these grants, some of the people who are volunteering for this organisation right now. Um, it feels to me like, and I've only been involved with it for about. Oh gosh, actually, it's been quite a long time. I was gonna say like three years, but I, geez, no, I think it's. I think it's like seven. Oh my gosh, okay. But anyway, um. As I've learned what this organisation does and as I've been part of it, um, I've realised that it supports a huge network. Of people who care about, about healthcare and about the community, so it would be a real shame if the. If it was lost, so. So we're, we're looking for emergency funding so that we can, we can survive.
Yeah, and I know even because I was asking some questions and so on, there is a, just some, what you referred to, a podiatrist there every second Monday. And currently, they have provided rental information to continuing care and circles of support and change, waiting to hear from the parties in that case. But, you know, there, there is, there has been other efforts made besides simply recruiting a physician, um, you know, to, to get rental revenue as well.
So your letter notes, um, Juanita, that, you know, s- the, the reach of your non, of your non-clinical programming is over seventeen hundred people across all the county. Uh, just in this past year.
Correct, yep.
Since you started doing grants, it's over thirty grants, six privately funded projects. In, resulting in about one point one million in investment in the last four years. So I get, you know, my question is, you know, and it's a hard question, um, get your crystal ball out, how, like. How long is it gonna take? You're here to request emergency funding. Do you, you know, do you have a sense of the length of time? I mean, emergency funding is just that. It's not core operational funding, right? It's, it's an emergency. Um, so what, you know, do you have a sense of what the expectation was from the, from the, the nonprofit? I mean, that runs the centre on like a chunk of time or?
Um. It's a hard question, I know. Let's see, like, where is my magic ball? I mean, yeah, I don't know, but. I mean, I wouldn't be surprised if it was at least six months. I'm, and I'm, I'm just guessing.
For sure.
Um, but it took, we've been working to recruit physicians to this area with Cape Breton South Recruiting for Health for over a year. And we have succeeded in getting a physician in Port Hoxbury, so.
Oh, yeah.
I think, I really do believe that that committee has a lot of really good processes and, and.
Energy.
Activities happening, and we've got some really good momentum. So I'm really hoping that we find a physician for our centre, but I, I cannot. I can't predict, so I mean, I would think at least six months.
Councillor Melanie Sampson?
Um, ye- yes, I mean, certainly the, you know, there's overwhelming uh reasons why we would of course want to keep. The Dr. K Center open for sure. Um, so for me, I just come back to, uh, we have a budget that we have to follow, so. You know, without having, um, without having Jason here with us, you know, I, I'm not sure where, you know, three thousand dollars is one month. Um, which is probably, you know, you can probably find a spot for that, but if it continues, where, what does that look like? Um, so my biggest concern is, I, I know you're requesting emergency funding, but how big is the emergency? And I, and I don't mean to say that, you know, I, 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 I just mean. Do we have a couple of weeks where we could um ask, you know, Director of Finance to have a look at our budget? To see if there's an area where that could possibly work for him to work with your organisation to, you know, just. Have a look at the current financial situation to really try to assess where they are. Because I certainly, you know, I, we, we'd want to be responsible with, with the money of, of the taxpayers of Richmond County, right? In terms of, you know, assuring that this emergency funding is really required. Where would that go? What would the accountability look like? And then, second of all, you know, do we have a spot that we can draw the money from? Because although we are going into budget deliberations, I mean, typically, our budget is not passed well into the new fiscal year, so it's not going to. You know, it's not something, I know you can't wait till we have our budget approved, and so uh, I'm just wondering if that's the way we could proceed in that. In the next couple of weeks, we could look for some of that information to be gathered, uh, and then perhaps ask. Um, you know, ask, ask staff to, to work with his staff to figure out, um, you know, where, where we sit with that. Absolutely, I mean. Yeah, we, we are not asking for this forever. We're trying, we truly are. You know, and if, if tomorrow somebody came and wanted to be, wanted to work out of the centre, we'd say, great, thanks, we're good.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so yeah, absolutely, we can, we would love to, you know, discuss options. Um, we're, we're quite open. We, we don't even necessarily need three thousand if that's not our deficit that month, for example. You know, we could, we could look at flexible plans.
So if you, if more rentals landed in a given month, then you could adjust.
Right. Um, part of, part of the reason it's an emergency now is because we, it's been so long. And we have been, I mean, we, we were without about thirty thousand dollars last year. So where did that money come from? That came from our fund that will maintain the building. That, that the community donated, that we have as a chunk of money to keep for the roof or to. You know, ha- if whatever happens, you know, the furnace blows up or something, that's that chunk of money, so we're steadily eating into that. Um, so that's, and, and we're at the point where we're worried about taking on more grant work because. If some, if the, you know, the horrible side does happen, then we can't administer it. So we've, we've actually kind of slowed down going after grant money, which is a shame. So we've, we've actually kind of slowed down going after grant money, which is a shame in.
Yeah, that's a concern.
In the current environment, especially with the people who are ready to volunteer, y- you know. So, yeah, absolutely, we'll, I would, we would be.
Yeah, well, that's, you know, that's a direct impact to the, the health of our community, right? Okay, um, so I'm hearing from Councillor Melanie Sampson to, uh, to have maybe, uh, the municipal staff work with, uh, the, the health centre staff to, um, to, to assess the situation, bring, bring back some information to us so that we could make a determination at our next gathering, okay? Sorry, Deputy Warden, did you have a question?
No, we're good, the, uh, I will say, uh, yeah, it wa- it's, I guess, nice to know of what our timeline is and, uh, if we do have a, a month or two of grace, that, kind of, you're not, you're not stuck so that we, when we do go into budget deliberations, we can actually, you know, look at where we, uh, look at where we fit and what we can, I mean, it's definitely a priority. It's not something we can put on the back burner for long. And, uh, I do, you know, I do believe that we really have to step up and, and help out in this case.
Yeah, well, we have, yeah. Can I comment on your comment? Um, I'm not sure that my board will be happy if I don't go after the three thousand dollars for this month. Is there any way we could change that to say, can you give us emergency funding for, you know, March? And then do the deliberations and the discussions, and then?
That's at the discretion of council. I mean, I, I think we want that due diligence done regardless of, you know, uh, the, the timing. Uh, Deputy Warden?
Yeah, tha- then I would definitely say, um, I would be, I would have no problem entertaining a motion to, uh, if the emergency funding is to, you know, we're only talking, and really, and I know I say only, but we're talking three thousand dollars to, uh, hold them over to a budget deliberation. So, again, I'm sure that somewhere in our current budget, we can find three thousand dollars. So I would have no problem making that motion to, uh, to move forward with a three thousand dollar donation or support for the Dr. Kingston.
Emergency.
Emergency support, yeah.
Okay. So I feel like we were maybe in the middle of a, of a motion here, though. So, um, we had, or did you actually make a motion? I don't think you did, no, we were just talk, discussing it. Okay, so we have a motion to approve the three thousand dollars in emergency support from Deputy Warden Diggden. Is there a second on that?
I'll second that, and, and, you know, I guess we're, we're under the assumption it's, it's, it's a one-month thing for now, and then we'll try and come up with something, you know, in that timeframe that might be, uh, a little more feasible for the, you know, hopefully, short term, but over the next few months if need be. But for now, we'll, we'll, we'll start here and then see where we can get with budget deliberations.
Okay, um, so is there any further discussion on the motion for three thousand dollars in emergency funding, uh, in March? Councillor Sean, or sorry, Melanie?
I, I just would have been comfortable to, to take a couple of weeks, um, to just ask the CFO to assess where that would fit in our budget. I just didn't, I, my feeling is that two weeks is not gonna make the difference. I, I certainly support the idea in principle of supporting a hundred percent and, but I would just, I just feel respectfully that we should be assessing where we sit with the budget and where that could fit.
Okay, and so this is a committee of the whole? It wouldn't be, uh, formally approved until a regular council meeting? So I think we could make a second motion as well to have that due diligence occur in the same timeframe, and then we can determine at regular council. Okay, any further discussion?
Am I allowed to make a comment?
Pardon me?
Am I allowed to make another comment? Two, two weeks would be great, it was the two months that.
That concerned you, yeah. Understood, understood, yeah. So, uh, sorry, Councillor Sean Sampson?
Yeah, so I think what Councillor Melanie Sampson is saying is put this on to the regular council meeting on, on the twenty-second, and that'll give you guys enough time to have that funding once it's approved, that, that needed. Uh, so, yeah, I would agree with Councillor.
Um, okay, I'm just, so there, it, the motion's been made and seconded, though. Process-wise, it couldn't come back to regular council, could it? If, we do, we would need to approve it here in order to bring it back to regular council, wouldn't we?
This has been a recommendation.
It's just a recommendation. But if the motion is not passed here, then it, can it come to regular council? We can add it, okay. Okay, so whether we pass the motion here tonight is, you know, won't preclude us from having it also on the agenda for the end of March. It's just a procedural matter. If we approve it here, it will absolutely be on the agenda, uh, for March, uh, the end of this month. If we do not approve it here, then, um, we can add it to the agenda for the end of March. So there is a motion, um, I mean, even seconded, sorry.
Yeah, I think we could probably approve it tonight, and, and we're looking for that, more information from our CFO, and then, uh, that'll kind of be our due diligence, and we can make a final decision in two weeks' time.
Right. Deputy Warden, did you have something else you wanted to say?
Uh, no, um, Councillor Sampson discovered it, I, I agree. Um, I think we move forward with the motion we have on the floor tonight so that in two weeks' time, we can, uh, we do have time to, you know, check with our CFO and, uh.
Yeah, and following this, following this motion, we can make an additional.
Yeah, and then adopt the motion in two weeks' time.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So, that being said, we have a motion on the floor, first and second. Could I, um, thank you. So all those in favour, please raise your hand. Those opposed, okay, motion carried. Is there any further discussion on this item, Councillor Melanie Sampson?
Okay, so I would make a motion that we, um, ask staff to consult with the CFO regarding, um, budget, uh, I'm just trying to think about the property.
Capacity?
Yeah, thank you, budget capacity for this request. Um, and also, I would add to that, to connect with the staff of the clinic to assess their current financial situation, and I guess ultimately provide a recommendation to council.
Okay. Any further discussion on that, or could I have a second on that motion? Councillor Sean Sampson?
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you, any further discussion? All those in favour, please raise your hand. Those opposed, motion carried. Thank you very much, Juanita, for putting you on the spot that way, I appreciate your time.
I thank you for letting me speak.
Absolutely.
Answer questions.
Okay, so next item on our agenda is a review of checks issued on February, uh, for February of two thousand and twenty-one. Those were circulated in your meeting package in advance. And, uh, I would just open the floor to councillors if you have any questions on those items. Okay, so hearing no questions, we'll move on to the items added to the agenda. The first item was International Women's Day, so Councillor Brent Sampson, I believe you wanted to speak to that. Go ahead.
I won't take up too much everybody's time, but firstly, I'd like to express my appreciation to all the great women who've been a part of my life. Furthermore, a big thank you to all the women who make Richmond County a great place to live and a great place that it is. Happy International Women's Day.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councillor Sampson. The next item on the agenda was one that I added, uh, because we have received a plaque from the Lieutenant Governor of Nova Scotia, the, uh, Honourable Arthur J. LeBlanc. Um, and it's accompanied by a letter, um, where he is saying that he's delighted to send the Enclosed Community Spirit plaque to the municipality of the County of Richmond. And it goes on to mention the, you know, the turmoil that COVID nineteen has caused and the series of tragic events that followed. And he mentions that he had an opportunity to call numerous municipal and Indigenous leaders to speak about how residents were coping. And he was greatly impressed to learn how resilient and positive Nova Scotians were in adapting to these significant challenges. He speaks about the, the wonderful residents of our province who demonstrated their amazing spirit and resourcefulness as they found innovative ways to continue their volunteerism and help those who are less fortunate. So in recognition of that tremendous spirit and resilience, he announced the creation of the plaque at the Celebrating Community Spirit, uh, and Volunteer Ceremony on September twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty. And he's asking that we display this plaque in our community, and, and he is prepared, uh, there's also some instructions to how, how to install the, the plaque. So this is a full-meal deal, and, um, I would like to express my deep appreciation to the Honourable Arthur, uh, LeBlanc for being so thoughtful and providing us with, uh, with the opportunity to, uh, to display the plaque in our, in our location here, so. Any questions or comments on that? Okay, so hearing none, um, I will open the floor to questions from the gallery. It's our question period, this is not restricted to items on the agenda. So if anybody has anything they would like to ask us about, we'd welcome you to come to the mic. Hello there. Thank you for coming, I'll ask you to press the red button, you know the drill.
Bonsoir.
Bonsoir.
I had two questions. You answered the first one already, that was seven C, concerning the committee's structure. I had asked a question some time ago, and I think you answered it tonight, so that's fine. My second question is on the question period. And I asked a question some time ago again, uh, where I made a suggestion that maybe, uh, given the number of people that come regularly, you're not likely to have a lo- a whole lot of questions if you limit it to, uh, people who are present. But now that you're live-streaming, if you gave an option to people who, uh, don't have access to transportation or don't have the courage to, to drive the, uh, the few kilometres or what, whatever, there might be an option to, um, give these people an opportunity to ask questions, especially during the, uh, committee meetings, where it's open to all subject areas. So I think I had made a suggestion, but it's just a question period, so it's not a suggestion period. So I'm gonna ask you, so I'm gonna ask you, uh, did you decide on providing, uh, the general public with an avenue to ask questions during this period?
So, so when you said the committee meetings, you mean the committee of the whole meetings, correct?
Exactly, yes.
Yeah, okay. So certainly, we've discussed it, but on, and the truth, the truth is, we haven't come to a decision on how exactly to manage that. Um, it's something we, I think we need to do more work on. I, you know, we discussed the communications plan earlier, this would be an ex, an example of why we need such a thing. Times have changed, to your point. And, um, we're live-streaming now, and, and we need to be providing this kind of option, so. I don't think I would be going out of, uh, out of bounds by saying we're all very much committed to making it happen. We just haven't quite figured out the best way to do it, um, so that we can manage it effectively and.
But people are, people have all kinds of patience, so I'm sure they'll wait.
Yes, no doubt, no doubt.
Anyway, uh, on that live-streaming, I think it's a great service that you're providing to the people.
Thank you.
Your, uh, positive vibes in the community, and people are very happy with that.
Oh, that's great, that's really great to hear.
And I'm one of them, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, um, any other questions or suggestiony questions from the gallery? We like to hear both, all right. So hearing none, then I will ask for a motion to move us to in camera. Councillor Brent Sampson?
I was actually.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right, it was just a comment to do, referring to his question. No, I, I can get that especially, whereas, you know, uh, myself, I'm a good forty minutes or more from here and, and, like, you know, uh, my district happens to be the farthest away from here. So travelling, especially in the winter months, there are people in my district who would be more than an hour away. And, and, you know, you, you may have a question you want to ask, but do you want to drive an hour and wait an hour and a half here and then drive an hour home after? You know, uh, I, it, it probably would be nice to make it a little bit more accessible to some of the people that aren't, aren't as handy to the municipal office.
That's a great point, and I apologize for not noticing your, your button lit earlier there.
Yeah, so I'll just agree with, uh, Councillor Brent Sampson. I mean, if there's a way where we can invite emails coming in during our meeting, uh, cut it off at a certain point during the meeting, uh, and say, you know, after this point, there's no more questions coming in. But, uh, yeah, if we can do that.
We need to figure that out, for sure.
Pass it into us during the meetings, uh, I think that'd be great for, like you say, the people that can't travel to come here.
All right.
I think it's a great suggestion, Mr. Vujer, so, thank you.
Okay. I was moving us too quick along that agenda, did you see that? All right, so at this point, if there's no further questions or comments, um, I will ask for a motion to, uh, move us in camera. Councillor Melanie Sampson?
I move that we move in camera, please.
Okay, thank you, could I have a second on that? Councillor Brent Sampson?
I'll second that.
Thank you, any further discussion? No? Okay, all those in favour, please raise your hand. Those opposed, motion carried.